Okay.
Yeah, yeah, just looking digging in my purse or my marker. Okay, are we all here? Eric, are we waiting for anyone? Are we on?
No, we're all, we're all here.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Santin? Councilman Bravo?
Here.
Here.
Councilman Bahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Here.
There's a quorum present.
All right, thank you. I'll stand, please, for the invocation by Vice Mayor Santin.
Okay. Lord, thank you for your many abundant blessings. I ask you today to pray for all levels of city officials in Miami Springs, and in particular for this assembled city council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant us the wisdom to govern and make the tough decision on the city budget, one that let us put all our own agendas aside and one which helps us meet the true needs of our residents. I ask all this in your name, Lord Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Amen.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Right, thank you, and welcome everyone to our second budget workshop for 2023. We're gonna get started with, just I asked Chris if he could do a summary of what he read out at the beginning of their last budget workshop.
Good evening, Mayor Council.
Evening.
Briefly on the memo, as we discussed at the last meeting, at our current mileage cap of 6.9900, the budget will show a deficit of $594,603 that would have to be funded from available fund balance. And at the current operate rating mileage of 6.9100, the budget will have a deficit of $716,625. And that scenario includes the assumptions below and does not include any of the items on the detailed wish list. And for the sake of comparing the differences between 699 and 691, or every mileage up or down point 10 of a mil would be $152,528.
A hundred and fifty two thousand cost for an ink, if we decrease.
A tenth of a mil.
A tenth of a mil. Okay, and Chris, with these projections, are there, is there anything pending that we don't anticipate that, you know, that could drastically change these figures that you gave us?
No, Mayor, not at this point in time.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we'll get started, Tammy.
Yes, so we have the Human Resources Department here this evening, section five of your budget books.
Summary for the HR budget is 400, excuse me, fourteen thousand three hundred and ten dollars greater than last year, or an increase of 4.3%. That is made primarily of salaries and benefits. And on the operating side, there's a $10,000 reclassification from education into contractual services, which was for a performance evaluation software.
So that was just added higher up? Right?
Yeah, it was just moved from one account to the other. And again, the salaries and benefits is due to the the COLA and the increase in health and health insurance across citywide.
Bill, hi, thanks for being here. I'm Human Resources Director. Does anyone have any questions for Bill?
To the chair.
Yes.
It may be silly, but do you by any chance have, I think last year you also had the goals, objectives, and accomplishments for HR?
Yeah.
Don't have them here on the binder.
And they're not in the.
But so we can get it.
Right. I've seen that.
How'd you manage to lower your liability insurance? That's the first that I see anywhere.
Is that what, well, I'm getting that, I think I'm getting that number from from budgets.
That was possibly not just liability insurance. The liability insurance includes all the insurances, workers' comp, general liability. I'd have to go back and see specifically what factor in his department with an allocation of expenses why his went down.
Yeah, it's just that everywhere else we've looked, it's been increases. In many departments, it's like the biggest increase from the previous budget, so.
Well, we don't have any, you know, we, we, we don't have, you know, injuries, we don't have any cars.
I got you.
Any, you know, we don't incur any of the of those things, so maybe that's it.
And Bill, I see on your, on the wish list, you have the the salary study as a wish list item, but that.
That's something that, you know, before William left, William said, please add that to your, to your.
Wishlist.
Right, so, and, you know, I, I made, you know, a number of calls and contacted some of the area HR directors to see what that would cost. It's all over the place. I'd say typically, I definitely think we could get a compensation study for under thirty five thousand. Some places like South Miami and Coral Gables were budgeting fifty, but I, I think we could get by with like thirty two, maybe between twenty eight and thirty two. But the, you know, I, the one thing that, and William was aware of this too, that a compensation study inevitably brings out a report that says some people need to be paid more, so it can be a lot of money in the end. But, you know, in terms of just making sure that we're balanced and, and there's equity in the system, that's you know, internal equity at least, that's something that would be helpful.
And if I may just add to that, not so much William, but it was, it was part of the obstacles and challenges for that your new city manager coming in, that was part of some of those challenges that a new city manager would have to deal with, with some, you know, pay. So that's particularly why it was added to originally into his budget. And then when we kind of discussed on sidebar, one on one with every department, as, as we've mentioned to you in the past, that we ask each department to reduce their budgets, and part of that was the fifty thousand that we chose to move out into a wishlist item, should that be something, but it was initially added because of this was going to be a new challenge for the city manager.
And realistically, with the budget that we have this year, where we're looking to, you know, need to make cuts in, in cost. I don't know that, you know, it's a good thing to have for the future, and it's something that we definitely need to do, but I don't know that there would be any, or a whole lot of wiggle room after paying for that study with, you know, what the results would be. All right. Anything else? I just want to thank you, Bill. You're always highly accessible at all hours. I'm calling you with with different questions, and I know you're here at City Hall quite a bit and do the function, you know, you and your assistant are, you know, our human resources team and with the risk management and everything else that you do.
Together, and, you know, she's terrific, and we, we, we balance each other. And, you know, we just love what we do, and I like serving this council too, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. So next up, we have golf, which is on section seventeen, and I have Paul, Lori, and Mason here.
The total proposed budget for the golf department is four hundred and forty eight thousand one sixty two, greater than fiscal twenty three, or twenty point six percent. And also on the summary, you'll see currently we're budgeting revenues at two point eight million, approximately two point six in total of expenditures, coming to a net surplus of approximately a hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. Some of the brief highlights too, again, increases in salaries and related benefits. The part-time employees are similar to fiscal twenty two. We had an increase in utility of utilities, electricity, approximately twenty nine thousand dollars. You have an increase in rentals and leases for the new golf carts fleet of twenty four thousand dollars. We've increased the merchandise account of fifty thousand dollars from the prior year to restock the, the stockroom for golf equipment and supplies. And we actually had a decrease in improvements of seventy five thousand that was due to roof repairs that were already paid for in fiscal twenty three. And the maintenance department, again, we also had increases of salaries and benefits. We had a decrease in thirty nine thousand for repairs and maintenance for irrigation. And just to let you know that, based on my conversations with Lori, we've had repairs in the past that every time a specific pump irrigation system goes out, it's been around twenty five or forty thousand dollars for repair. So we took it out, but it could, if, you know, if we get something struck by lightning, et cetera, et cetera, it could need to be funded or paid for and on savings in another line item. And finally, in that department, we had an increase in the debt service for the new loan of renovating the golf course of approximately three hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars.
Is this, when you're saying three hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars, I have two hundred and eighty seven. Is it?
The two eighty seven is a net of some equipment going off that we're finalizing payments on, and the three eighty seven is included in the four thirty five, so you had a debt coming off the books and new debt going on, on the books, netting down to the two eighty seven.
Okay.
To the chair.
Yes.
What were, Chris, I don't know if you can help me out with this question, what were the revenues for this last year for the golf course? Because I have budgeted, I don't have actual from.
Second, let me add some numbers together.
No problem. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
In reference to the revenue, is that based on the date that you guys expect the golf course to start operating?
We based it on opening October the first. We're not gonna make the October, and sometime in November, we'll come on.
Sometime in November, okay, thank.
And then my second question would be maybe to Paul. How were your memberships? Obviously, we're closed now for a couple of months, but prior to that, were we able to obtain any more memberships? Or that's just not like, it's not hot right now.
The memberships, you know, because we were closing and everybody's aware of it, therefore, you know, there wasn't any, too many people.
So they didn't renew?
Didn't bring us much revenue.
Okay.
Because we were only going to be open, you know, till the beginning of April.
And then the year prior, on the top of your head?
Our memberships pretty much stayed steady from what they had been the year before. We hadn't grown anything because of, we were, you know, continuing to increase the, the conditions of the golf course.
I'm just trying to get a number. Ninety seven thousand.
Yep.
That was prior to closing, and I'm sure obviously it's gonna change for following, because.
What is the ninety seven thousand?
It's not really something that we look to sell a lot of. Membership, you know, kind of gives us a set number. We have a certain percentage of that revenue we want to capture. But most of our, our high paying revenue comes from people outside of Miami Springs, outside of Miami.
Well, considering the condition of the golf course, the country club, I think it's fairly good. Ninety seven thousand in memberships, and there's not much going on there.
Through the chair, based on what we were just talking about, the opening of the, the golf course, what's the impact on it, considering that we're thinking October first? So November fifteenth, possibly, what's the impact on your? Because you're still obviously having expenditures and.
Loss of revenue, obviously, for both parts of November.
And then that would be?
We have more staff coming back on as we closer to opening, that our maintenance crew will lead to the end. We have more staff coming on basically two weeks to three weeks prior to our opening, because we have to train our outside personnel, our inside personnel as well. So those numbers will increase starting in, you know, mid-October, if not.
In October.
I have a question. Has anyone been given to doing something special for Springs residents, like when you go to open, like? I don't know, has, has that?
We give a preferred rate for Springs residents always, well. I'm just telling you, with the conditions, there's golf, there's more of a preferred rate, because, you know, we're keeping an eye. The fact is that Miami Springs residents paid for that golf course for many years when it wasn't profitable, and it was something eight, nine hundred thousand dollars a year. It's made money over the last two years, so our rates for general people outside of our area are going to increase tremendously. For Springs residents, they're going to see a smaller increase, but nothing in consideration of the percentage that's going to go to the other.
To the chair, you're the man of the hour, Paul. So on your wishlist, I see here that you have, it says design plan for a clubhouse. Do you mean a new country club? Or what, what's, is there a difference between clubhouse or country club?
You know, the, you know, it's not, the clubhouse is old. You know, it's as old as the golf course. Had additions added on, they're not the best of additions added on. It's dated on the outside and the inside. You just got it painted, so it looks a little cleaner. You know, clubhouses, we have the best of the worlds right now. We have, we outsource our food and beverage. That's a big drain on revenue, so we get rent from those people every year, every month. A clubhouse is what you'd want it to be. It can cost you a lot of money to operate it. It all depends on how you, you set up your operation of the clubhouse. If we need a new clubhouse, we need at least eat a, need a new facade for the golf course.
I'm with you a hundred percent.
And yes, the, you know, the plumbing's old, the electric's old, the flooring's old. And yes, the, you know, the plumbing's old, the electric's old, uh, the flooring's old.
But how, those, those kinds of things, Paul, um, how do you think that they would increase or what percentage, how would we know what percentage increase in revenues we would get? The, and I, and I'm just asking here, my understanding is we're, when the golf course is operating, you said that we're pretty, very often we're at max. You can't take more golfers, right?
Correct.
So we're already at max. The only way to get more revenues from that would be to increase the rates. Right? Of the ones that are attending because it's not like we can sell more tickets.
Right, no.
So, right, okay, and the food and beverage we contract out, which I agree that is not the kind of business the city wants. In fact, I think we were in it years and years ago of, you know, and yes, it's not the kind of business that the city wants to get into of trying to run a restaurant. Um, so. And I'm asking, I'm not at all, I'm just trying to see if we were to, you know, invest significant improvements in the clubhouse. How would we, what, what revenue would we generate? Where would we generate the revenue from that?
Well, the city will not. A clubhouse in my years of experience is a, is a costly thing to operate. Um, with my years and the sense that most money I've always made was out of double white trailers. Um, and I made the, the comment several times is, matter of fact, when we were talking about doing the golf course. Um. The only thing that really matters is the golf course. The building, you know, you need to think about what the residents want. You need to think about what the city wants. Um, that's the, that is the emphasis of the golf course is that clubhouse. And a lot of residents come there and you know, it's, it's held for many weddings and, and all kinds of different functions. Um, you would only recognize revenue from increasing your rents. You make an improvement. Uh, you know, you, you're gonna get more, they'll be able to charge more, so you'll be able to charge more for rent.
For we, for the food and service provider.
Food and beverage and banquet spot, cause that's all we, we have one room in that clubhouse. That's all we need. I don't know that you're looking, the city's not, the only way they're gonna recognize revenue is through increased rents.
And the increase that you were saying with the um, golf fees, did you say that you're expecting to do that? That that's a given because of demand? Or because of our costs have gone up or what's going to?
Our, our conditions.
Our conditions are.
There are conditions. We're looking to recap our, our expenses. And operate where it's a zero net off the general fund, which it has been the last two years.
Thank you for that, all of, all three of you and your staff.
Dollar number. We're paying our note, we're paying our own way. I, I don't know how many departments in the city pays their own way, but we're paying our own.
Paul, you want, you want those fees that, you know, the increase, you want it to be commensurate with the conditions of, the new conditions of the course, right? I mean, you know, like, you're not, you're not gonna do anything that, like, that's what the market calls for, for conditions like you're gonna have, right?
We always do what the market will bear and we're at the top of that market.
Right.
We're able to go out and get the top. And we've researched already what other facilities are gonna be charging this next year. So our, our, our rates are gonna be at the top of that level.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, so question in reference to uh, the country club, I know we mentioned about possibly upgrading it. So you're saying that doesn't, it wouldn't inc, it wouldn't allow you to increase the fees because you're talking about a facility that has another uh, you know, from the restrooms to just, it doesn't. Okay, fair enough. The other question I guess is what percentage? You said that a, a high percentage of our residents use it. Do we know what percentage that is that actually uses it?
Honestly, no.
Okay. And this revenue that we have here is based on a percentage that you guys already have in mind or you already, you're still a work in progress in reference to figuring out?
Fees we have, have in mind.
In mind, but that's still, that could be obviously higher considering what.
Right.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
I think revenue is capped because there is not much more to offer at the country club. I mean, you just have the greens, which is the best part. And then you have a restaurant and then you have a couple of ballrooms and then the shop. But there's really nothing else to invest your money in while you're there. So I do think that if you got a really nice state-of-the-art country club to complement your greens, you're, you're, you're gonna be able to by default charge more, perhaps even have a waiting list, you never know.
There, there's, I mean, a clubhouse is what you make out of. So if the city wants to utilize it, they want to do, you know, all kinds of different classes and things like that. Yeah, it's gonna increase usage of, of the clubhouse. Where the city's gonna recognize the money i- is the, from the golf course. It's not from functions.
From the fees golfers pay and you're saying that the fees that golfers pay, you'll be able to uh, market conditions of optimize that based on the, all the work that you've done so far, that all of you to get us here and, and the new work. Um, what can we do from the city? Is there something that we can do once you open? To, or is there something that would be helpful um, from the city once you open to ensure that you can meet that market demand and increase the fees and get the, the payback uh, for the investment? Is there anything? And you don't have to answer me right now, but just, you know, think about that and let us know how once um, we're ready to open. Um, if there's something, and, and I know the golfing is kind of its own unique little group and they talk to each other and you know, you operate on a different level than the rest of us. So um, I don't know that, that you need that kind of publicity or, or anything, but.
Yeah, that, that's uh, you're absolutely right. That, that's golfers are a unique group and they talk and, and they network and there's a lot.
Right. So the word gets, I, and I've told you this before, I've gotten the message from, since the golf course has improved dramatically from people outside of the city, um, saying that they had given up playing at Miami Springs years and years ago and um, some friends told them, no, you gotta come try it again. And they were like impressed and, and just loved it and have been coming ever since, so.
You know, the one thing, talking about the clubhouse and a nicer facility. Uh, and while sitting here thinking, one of the things that, that could be sought after in revenue and looking at, at ways of doing is then you start selling a social membership. But you're gonna need more amenities to create a social membership. Then, then you have something you can lay your hands on. Until then, you, you can't touch it.
I think the issue with the social memberships and stuff is um, you know, we're in a different um uh, time now, you know, where before people would belong to the club and that's where they would go now. Um, in fact, everything that opens up from one municipality to another, they open up this new area and it kind of cannibalizes on, you know, that was the hotspot in that area and now everyone's going there and you know, we'll never be able to compete with that and everyone likes to, to constantly be trying something new. Um. I wanted to ask you with this of the part-time year-round salaries. Am I reading this right? We had an increase. Why did we have such a dramatic increase if we're closed down? Um. Oh, the increase, I see. Never mind, I got it. The increase is what now when you open? Yes, thank you.
Right, same.
I lost the circuit there. Of when you go back to opening.
Yeah, I had one more question. Uh, Paul, do you have any uh, what's your uh, plan in terms of like uh, augmenting like your uh, youth program with Mel Reese Town? Is there any plan to do anything?
First T, we're, we're looking to bring it in first T and starting that facility. Based on the practice holes that we'll have behind the, the clubhouse and the, the other areas that we'll be able to reach in and touch with the quality of our facility.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be strongly uh, getting first T up and running.
Okay, so that's something you can do, right? It's, yeah, right, okay.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
So the first T, just to be clear, this is an added program to the one that was existing before that moved over to Miami Lakes, correct?
Correct. It's a satellite program off of the one in Miami.
Right, and this.
So ours was going to be from the one at Mel Reese presently there was there at Mel.
Uh, what, what I understand and you can obviously clarify that initially, that Beckham Group obviously was a big deal for them to abolish that program or have it moved and it became that much of a bargaining bit thing that they ended up offering three million dollars to move it over to Miami Lakes. Is that all rumors or is that truly what they ended up doing? Because they did move to Miami Lakes, correct?
I know the rumors. I'm not privy to the amount of monies that were paid out or whether it was done or ever done. I know that was originally offered up. I don't know that it was in the end followed through up on. Uh, but it is at Miami Lakes. They're operating out of trailers now. They're looking at building a facility there in conjunction with the Graham family. So uh, you know, they're doing it. I'm in touch with the DeLucas on a regular basis.
Did they come to us at first or?
They came to us originally when I came, came to the facility, the discussion was how could get first T into Miami Springs.
Okay.
We didn't have a facility. We had a goat ranch, so there was no demand to come to Miami Springs. Once our facility became improved, then we held several first T tournaments at our facility. We have the plaques on the walls.
Right, but at that point, the, the, the negotiation and the potential negotiation to them moving over here was already a, a viewpoint, you're saying?
Pretty much at that point in time.
Like, I think part of the three million was to help build facility.
Or first T at, at, at Miami Lakes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Right. Thank you, the three of you, um, and your team, you that is our crown jewel, that in the Curtis Mansion and um.
But we're proud of it.
It looks beautiful and I love hearing the comments from people outside of the Springs who are golfers, how, how impressed they are with, you know.
But answer your question.
We're proud of it.
Councilwoman Bravo.
So much.
Councilwoman, just to answer your question earlier, the revenue for this year is approximately one point one million for all of their golf range sales.
Perfect, thank you.
Food and beverage.
That was twenty-two, twenty-two. Twenty-twenty-two.
Oh, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, right, okay. One point one, you said?
Yes.
Paul, and it's the last two years, right, that you've made a profit, right? That before that, we had never made a profit with the golf course and it was subsidizing it in, in the terms of hundreds of thousands of dollars every year. That was eight to nine hundred thousand dollars per year that we were subsidizing. Thanks to your hard work, yours and Lori's and Mason, yes, and the whole crew, we're um, the last two years, we've actually seen significant profit. It's wonderful.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Mason.
So next we have our city attorney's um, budget on section seven.
Really briefly here on this, the budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four is the same as twenty twenty-three of two hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven fifty-five. No increase from the prior year.
Any questions for our esteemed city attorney, Roger here?
Mayor, council members, I'm here to answer any questions. Obviously, I think everyone's very familiar with our general uh, legal counsel drafting of resolutions, assisting the city with all litigation, uh, with any opinions. Um, and we anticipate um, no increase this year, so we're trying to keep it based on last year.
Mayor, no questions. So I, I think I remember last time the thirty thousand for code revisions was because we, we were planning on, I think it was the sign code that we were, that we were dealing with. Is there something that, if that's folded into this, is there, are there? What code revisions are we proposing now or, or do we have uh, on the docket?
So that's a good question, council member. Uh, this year we're anticipating the same amount of code revisions or if not more than last year. Um, I think everyone, for example, is very familiar with CGA's uh, proposed plans. Um, I know that the council is very interested in moving forward with gateway overlay um, changes. We just received authorization. Um, vice mayor, you know that we're looking into and, and contemplating the sort of development agreement framework that might be necessary. And beyond that, I know that there's the Abraham Tract zoning rework that's gonna be, you know, have to go through. Um, and the Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street rework as well.
Uh, can you speak, Roger, to that relationship then? Cause I remember uh, so I remember we got recommendations from the Economic Development Board and like I turned to Heidi, I was like, so let's do it. And she's like, well, you're gonna need, you know, like a CGA to, to do that. So what's the relationship between what they do in terms of consulting and, and what, what's their role in the code revision and, uh, and what's Vice Serota's role?
Absolutely. So CGA's role in any zoning work uh, involving ordinances is to provide their technical skill and obviously to assist in drafting these ordinances. But the actual legal review is through our office. We would not allow or you know, we would make sure that an ordinance that is before you is legally uh, sufficient and can be done. Uh, not everything that CGA does takes into account, for example, Florida statutory requirements, federal legal requirements. Uh, you know, case law, obviously, and local regulations. That's nothing, you know, that's just our purview versus CGA's technical proficiency as to drafting zoning text. Um, so I hope that answers that question.
If we get through the thirty thousand dollars, that's uh, if we get through the thirty thousand dollars, does that mean that we have to pay more if, if the code revisions go, go beyond those thirty thousand?
So I, I'm, I don't know how to answer that at this time. Um. That's sort of a, a question I think for the future if things become very uh, expensive. But at this time, we don't anticipate that. That's what we are looking at and that's what we kept to last year as well.
And these kinds of ordinances, like to be clear, say when we um, last, last week, we um, talked about some tweaks to the gateway ordinance. That's just part of, included in this package of what you do, of the services that you provide. I, I do um, um, wanna comment that um, I mean, we see Roger here and we've seen Heidi here in the past, you know, sitting here in the past. Dennis Bino, but um, their law firm has breadth and depth of expertise and knowledge and I've spoken with a lot of the different attorneys and I'm sure some of you have too on different issues. They, that, you know, like everything else, just like medicine, there's specialists, you know, that you go to that uh, doctors that, you know, deal with special cases and, and their law firm provides that for us. And I think it's a really valuable um uh, resource for us. So um, I encourage all the council members, if you have questions about something, reach out to Roger and if he can't answer them, you know, he will get on board somebody from their team um, that, you know, can help us, can help you.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, Roger, just to get a sense of the work for this next fiscal year. Um, are you saying that um, within the scope of that year, we can get to uh, what are the gateway overlay codes, changes we might be looking at and Abraham Track and Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street?
So I think a lot of this is gonna be up to timing and the truth is I, we're not completely appreciative of the entire scope that's gonna be necessary. Um, and that's mostly, you know, because of the fact that we have not yet begun the process of holistically and comprehensively looking at these zoning districts with council and with CGA.
And that's, and that's still on the wishlist, like that we haven't funded CGA to do that yet.
Right.
Or to this point, so that's.
And that uh, uh, just going back to Thirty-Sixth Street for a second.
Yes.
Includes the recommendations by the Economic and Business Development Task Force as well. So that's all.
Right, that analysis needs to be done as well with CGA and, and with.
I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to get a sense of the broad.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, depending on funding and so forth. Thank you.
So, um, the chair, just to clarify again, just to, you're saying that basically until you really don't see how much changes need to be done to these districts and language that you need to put in. Thirty seems like reasonable, but it could be more.
This is what we have planned for and this is what we anticipate and this is what we anticipated last year for the zoning, for example, with the sign code rewrite. Um, so that's right now what we're, we're sticking.
On the basics, but okay.
Pretty consistent last year.
Any other questions? Okay, is Heidi on?
No, she's not.
She is not, but if necessary, obviously.
Relay our, I was just gonna say hi from all of us if she was on. All right.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Roger.
So next we have the uh, Public Services Department and you can uh, turn to section thirteen.
Liz and Laz.
The Liz and Laz team.
I always think it's like a storybook or, or a TV show. It should be a series, you know, Liz and Laz. The power team behind keeping the city humming.
The total public works budget fiscal twenty-four is three hundred and twenty-three, seven sixty-seven greater than the prior year. And that's broken down into several different cost centers. The administration budget is fifty-nine thousand or twelve percent more than last year. You have the Public Services Street, Streets and Streetlight Division, thirteen thousand or three point six percent greater than last year. Public Properties, two hundred and eighty eight thousand or thirty one percent last year. You'll see in the memo there that one got a large chunk of the property insurance increase. Building maintenance, forty four thousand or twelve percent lower than fiscal twenty three. Fleet maintenance was seven thousand or seventeen percent higher than last year. And I have some brief points on each one. The administration primarily is increases, again, salaries and related benefits, small changes in operating expenses. Streets had smalling smaller increases in salaries and related benefits. They had an increase of twenty thousand in electricity and five thousand less in operating supplies and repairs and maintenance. Public properties, again, increase in salaries and related benefits, fourteen thousand increase in electricity, sixteen thousand in water, two hundred and fourteen thousand in the property insurance. And building maintenance, a small increase in salaries and benefits and an increase of thirty seven thousand in repairs and maintenance. And fleet, again, was a small increase in contractual services and a five thousand dollar increase in operating supplies.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Chris, I'm sorry, what was the property insurance, was it, what was the?
Two hundred and thirteen.
Two hundred and thirty, right?
Two hundred and thirteen.
Thirteen, okay, thank you.
And that's because it's for our facilities, right, which is what is going up across the state.
Yes.
The facilities. This is all thanks to, in part, the hurricane that hit the West Coast last year that the cost are being.
Passed on.
Passed on throughout the state. Facilities. And we saw that too with our Recreation Department for our Recreation Facilities.
Um, through the chair.
Yes.
Talking about the property insurance, this is just being used for now because there may be changes, right, to that. Property insurance. We're working behind the scenes to see how we can reduce those costs, yes.
You guys do really well. You do an amazing job in keeping our city going, especially when when you think of, you know, our city being around almost a hundred years and somehow you're always there to take care of problems. Really appreciate that, and and your staff, I don't think they hear it enough from any of us. I know you get a call when something's going wrong, but please convey, at least from me, and I think from the rest of the council, that we're greatly appreciative of everything the Public Works staff does behind the scenes constantly.
And and early, because I leave here, Miami Springs at six forty in the morning, and I'm back here about seven ten. And I was in the street and I saw, you were probably there last, but I definitely saw Liz when that tree fell down after the storm. It was metal, metal lurk?
Metal lurk.
Right there. So I was really quick and responsive. It was, it was eighty five done by ten eighteen.
Yeah.
So it wasn't eleven o'clock, it wasn't lunch and.
No, 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 no.
It was taken care of. Yeah, when I passed by, there was, and I, it was what, seven, no, eight o'clock, eight in the morning, so you guys already been at it.
Liz, my understanding is the tree fell because it was diseased. It had a problem inside. It was.
No, in the water.
Wanted to make sure. And that you couldn't tell from the outside that it was, you know, sometimes it's like humans, you know, you have a condition and it's not visible on the outside, but you have a tumor or something growing on it.
It's not at the base. The whole grass system came out. I saw it. And with so much rain and the saturation, that's the scary part. A lot of these roots around the whole city are probably a little bit loose. It's been a lot of rain.
All right. Can you tell me a little bit about the fleet budget? What what does that cover, the fleet division that?
Want to elaborate a little bit on that? I know it's it's shared wealth. So a fleet is shared every.
And the reason I'm asking is it seems very little for, you know, for.
It's shared amongst the the departments. So we have a general contract, so we have a contracted service for our fleet maintenance. And that percentage is shared throughout all the departments. So for.
So say for recreation.
Correct.
There, they get a percentage on their budget is for fleet. And this fleet here is for your vehicles.
It manages all the gar- the garbage trucks, manages the flatbeds, the cranes, manages any of the regular vehicles that we use to pick up through public properties, any of the trash and the litter around the city. Any of the equipment for tree removal stump grinder, bobcat.
Back on.
Equipment.
That we need to operate.
Yeah.
To give the city the way it is.
Goes, and this fleet division budget is to operate that equipment.
That's correct.
I mean, to maintain, to maintain that equipment.
To maintain the actual contract with the fleet services company that we contract.
Okay.
On the budget on all of our departments, you have the forty five ten, which is our repairs and maintenance. So what it costs us to actually do the actual repair of buying the filters, buying the parts, the labor, there's a cost of labor for the work between them, and that's passed on to each department, depending on where the work is done and where the vehicle is costing.
Okay, so say, for example, I'm just trying to understand it. Under the Building Maintenance Division, there's a fleet maintenance cost of twelve hundred dollars.
Correct. So that's what we're talking about. So PM's preventive maintenance, if I have to, let's say the AC goes out and we need to do an AC repair, if I have to send it out to have some balancing or alignment. If you know, a doorknob breaks, so any of that type of repairs, you're gonna see under that forty five ten. And there's always going to be a cost shit, a cost of the labor part of that work order. So then the amount of time that the mechanic worked on that vehicle. It's it's really hard to just kind of piece it, so it's lumped into what the parts were and what the actual labor work was. And that's where the forty five ten account for every single department falls into.
But it's actually then a mechanic.
There's a couple mechanics.
The mechanic, even though it says fleet, it's not. Am I misunderstood?
Because that's how, by definition, it's it's fleet services.
Okay, but it's not fleet, a vehicle, it's mechanic, a mechanic going to, right, the time, sir, okay. I guess that's what's throwing me off is.
Repair services of the actual.
Of the actual vehicle or piece of equipment. It's a brand new truck, so it really doesn't have a lot of expenses. I want to tell you, it's like five years, six years old. So it's brand new. It really doesn't have anything besides preventative maintenance. And I even, I've had reduced the tires on it because they just got a brand new set of tires. It really doesn't go around too much. I mean, it goes around a lot, but it's a small city, so it doesn't require it unless it gets torn up for any reason, but not on that, those vehicles.
Through the chair, so on the on the salaries or that's just, they have, you have mechanics on on staff, you're saying?
We have a contractor on staff.
Oh, contract.
So that's where that falls.
Okay.
And that contractor provides the mechanics pays for their insurances and all of that. Right, so. Under that contract. That's correct.
Okay.
And they maintain all of our vehicles, though, from a garbage truck to a seventeen year old pickup.
I guess I haven't seen all the new vehicles. You guys are doing pretty good considering.
They're all old.
That's what I'm saying, I think, considering the age of our fleets are.
I think our newest vehicle actually is the building maintenance van, because they needed something to put all their equipment in so that they can actually do the repairs. So the rest of our fleet is over ten years old. Each vehicle is ten or above.
So the figure.
Through the chair. Yes, sir.
Just to get a general sense, what's the size of our fleet?
Overall in the city?
Yeah.
I haven't looked at that number, to be honest with you, but I can give you an idea.
Yeah, just an idea.
Uh, for us, I know for police, I want to tell you, there's like maybe forty something. I haven't looked at the number in a really long time, and I apologize that I don't.
Okay.
I'm unprepared for that. Um, I know in our department that is actually functioning. You're talking about maybe twenty vehicles. Yeah, twenty, twenty five, tops.
Okay.
And including all of your big, heavy equipment, you're saying?
Do you have a lot of non-functioning?
We have a lot of duct tape. We do.
Sure. I didn't see, I didn't see, I didn't see that line.
Yeah, they're Frankenstein. I mean, really, honestly, they do miracles. One of the efforts that we do together, and you'll see. We've gotten a lot of comments from folks that have come in from outside of the department. Because we've been able to hire a couple of folks in the past couple of years that never, you know, worked in other cities, but didn't under, didn't know anything about Miami Springs, and they walk in and they're like, oh, my goodness, but you guys are hands on, you know, like you're there. You guys are, if you have to order a part, if you have to pick up a part, I mean, he picked up batteries this morning, and I was ordering parts for a garbage truck and, you know, it's a collective effort, and one of the things that we have worked really, really hard in these past couple of years is to really reduce the cost. So I've worked a lot on the contract side to make sure that every single buyer that we buy from, we're not just piggybacking on the contract is that we're actually getting that pricing. So I've gone through, I want to tell you eighty percent of them. And the savings have been tremendous, and that's why you see what you see as far as our budget now. We're very proud of the effort that we're really putting into that. We would love to say that we can reduce the budget more, but this is bare bones. This is as much as we really need to actually get this to function.
How about you have on the wishlist, an F one fifty truck? What is that to replace a truck that is on its last end, or is it?
They're all on that.
Well, yeah.
Be more specific.
Uh, most, most of the vehicles that we've had are hand-me-downs. Only a couple of them were bought brand new twelve years ago, thirteen years ago, so give or take. Um, one that we tried to do this year, but I was not able to get one, was in the sanitation department for our barrel pullers. Um, so we're okay with that. We're checking along. It might have AC today.
It was a hand-me-down from the police station.
Right. And that new one that we have on the wishlist is because we're dumping way too much money into the ones that the public properties department uses. When I start spending two to three thousand dollars on having to replace a transmission, and I possibly have to replace an engine, now it's not cost effective to the city for us to continue to do that. It's a lot of money, and that particular department, our public properties has suffered. We've had a lot of expenses. What we have tried to do again with pricing is get the best pricing, so we don't just go to one place for a price. We call two and three places, hey, and if it's ten dollars less, I'm going for ten dollars less. That's how we function. But it's to replace one of our everything. I mean, the handles are, you know, falling off. The doors are in rough shape.
Hey, just for some brief clarification there, that that needs to be removed from the wishlist, because on my memo, that would have been paid out of the Sanitation Enterprise Fund, not the General Fund.
They're getting.
Is that a good thing? Yes.
Yeah, you're getting.
Yes, it's it's embodied in that.
Well.
Well, easy, easy. We'll get to there, but at least there's.
Second.
There's more hope. I'll take it out of somewhere else.
Any other questions for Liz and Liz?
No one does more with less.
I I agree. I agree. You guys are amazing. And I think you you see it as, and I, and certainly mean it, but I think you all see it as a challenge of making things work.
This budget has been, this budget has been a challenge, like Liz said, we really rate. Ever expected it that service was going to go up and stuff, but we took it to the limit. I mean, we're a little worried of where we're at. Anything that could be done will be greatly appreciated and very helpful. But we really cut corners to help out every department here and yeah, we're we're down to the nitty gritty, to tell you the truth.
Through the chair, yes.
You didn't take anything away from your department that you can't do without, right? Or you're just winging it right here too?
We didn't take anything down, but we narrowed it down to
That's the next step.
Too close to.
Yeah.
We appreciate it though, because we feel, we feel that same pressure.
Yeah.
To try to balance this.
And it's stuff like this, you know, your insurance for your department, the same for rec department, you know, increased a hundred and something thousand. When it was forty something, it's a hundred and fifty two thousand. I mean, these are just costs that that the city has to absorb and pay, and you know, it's, we're not getting any. I mean, we're getting insurance over it, but.
That's being responsible too, as a department. You're setting up a different bar, so I really appreciate that you took the time and you waited out, or whatever it is that you could. Because it is a team effort, and it's gonna give, it's gonna be given back to you at the end of the day. We we preach it to every single employee. At the beginning, it was, oh, my God, Liz is nickel and diming, oh, my God, Liz is cheap. But I I always, and it's one thing that, you know, we we say it in different ways, but we convey the same message to the entire team. Is I know now in the beginning, it seems like I'm really nitpicking and I'm not giving, and I'm not giving. But the moment that you really need something, we're able to give it to you. So these guys do really, really, really hard work, and they get one pair of boot. And and I know it sounds really petty, but it's not. They get a pair of boot. That's it, one, one for a whole entire year. And if they have a hole in their boot, I can't expect them to work. But I have to pay attention to the budget because technically I budgeted for one for each one, right? But because we're able to reduce costs in other areas and kind of stretch it a little bit more, then I can say, go get the boots. And then they come to me and say, can we buy the boot? Yeah.
I I think what shows too is is the effort that y'all do, that your department does, is that when we had like this tree down on Metal Lark, unexpected, but a huge, huge tree, if anyone saw it. By the grace of God, it didn't hit the house or the or the fence. I mean, it just. That the next day, it's something unexpected, not on your schedule, a lot of work. I mean, this is not a minor, you know, send somebody out with a truck and pick it up. I'm sure it took work, hours and hours of work to, but by the next morning, it's been taken care of, you know, corralled and, you know, and and the sidewalk's clear and all, and that's something that wasn't even planned for.
It was administration, it was streets, it was public properties, and it was sanitation. So you had everybody partake. I know that you see in numbers, you see separate departments, but we all really do work hand in hand. Sanitation and public properties, they really help each other out. There's different responsibilities, but in the end. Yeah, we do it. And the supervisors that we have do a tremendous job, every single one of them. They take turns, you know, it's your turn this week, it's my turn next week. Hey, do you have a guy? Hey, can I have this one? You know, I need a driver, can you spare a guy? And you'll see one of our supervisors out there, he's short that day, and George is out there riding a mower, cutting out on Ludno, more on Curtis Parkway, and there's no complaint. There's no complaint.
Through the chair, in reference to like the tree planting and trimming, like what percentage, you guys sub some of that work off?
All of it, all of it is subbed.
Every. Every single thing.
We leave that to the experts.
I guess, and obviously you have the criteria in reference to the, the trimming. For certain trees, right?
Yeah, the hundred thousand that we put into tree trimming. Um, I think just a couple of years, maybe we got an extra hundred thousand. Um, our residents would love the extra hundred thousand, it would make our life easier if we had an extra hundred thousand. Um, but in. We. We've structured it to where we can do it by zones and we try and keep everybody um happy. Um, sometimes we. May think that we need to cut and it really doesn't need to, but we'll go back on our list and we'll check and we'll like. It, it got trimmed, it's an oak, you need to give it a chance, you know, to breathe, it needs some new growth before we can touch it again. So we, we look at it from that um particular perspective, um, is it even appropriate to trim? Sometimes we get concerned that it's the season. Uh, to not say the name, but. And everybody wants to trim their trees and it may not be the appropriate thing to do. So what we do is we sends the crews out there. Um, to evaluate it and if we can thin it a little bit. Then we try and do that in-house. Um, if we can. We save that way.
Those calls were obviously done by you guys in reference to you don't leave another decision in there to make that decision, I guess they're.
Those are strictly his call and he's now, we actually are street foreman is responsible for uh the tree trimming. And he's done a great job at organizing it. Uh, following up with the guys, going to the different addresses, making sure that the cuts are being done properly. If the residents have a question. Um, and they call us, if the resident wants to be there. Well, we'll call them and we'll make arrangements with that contractor uh to be out there with that resident. Whatever time they ask. Um, this particular contractor that we're, we've been working with now for the past four years. Um, is very responsive. We, we stretch it. Uh, we try not to do it all at the same time. Cause if I trim too early, then we trim too early. And then you don't see it. Um, so you need to give it its growth. Period and then. Trim. Right now we have no more money left, so.
And we have, so in the budget. We have a hundred thousand for tree trimming and fifty thousand for new planting.
Do the chair, well, like, it's not relative to budget, I just, I don't know, I wanted to know if um you have a specific time of the year where you go out and do like mass planting for. Um, resident soils upon their request. I don't know if you have a preferred time of year.
This year has been very, very, very difficult because it's been way too hot. Just way too hot. And we have been really concerned about survival. So, um, and when we say survival, it's because we then, yes, they'll. Water it for thirty days, but then we have to water it after. And the expense of us watering it. Is huge.
Normally we wait for the rainy season.
Which is May.
Okay.
Right. But it's been super hot, so like she said, they only water thirty days a contract, it's thirty days and it's on us. And. You gotta water it every day.
You'll see some planting soon.
So. On those whales.
Yeah, like really soon.
Good, good. Yeah, absolutely.
As a cost savings, cause the watering is really expensive.
What about, I had a, a question regarding, and I don't know if that's gonna come up at a future council meeting or if regarding the um. Or if councilwoman, if you're working on this with the parks board. Well, with the um black olives and the treatment. For the black olives, is that something because? My thought on that was that this could be an enterprise fund where. You know, if a resident wants that kind of treatment. They would pay to have it and we would provide it and there would be a, you know, some.
We can do it, we could do it either way. It's just a city tree. Right, so that's, I would have to defer probably to legal to say, is it okay? Um, for the resident to pay for it.
So that's not, you haven't considered that, I mean, thought it out rule, so we can just do that at another meeting and discuss the, the possibilities there. I think there's some residents that, that I've spoken to, you know, they would just. They like the tree, they just don't want the mess and they're more than willing to.
Yeah, we talked about.
To pay to have it treated, it's, I, I don't, I don't think.
It's expensive.
Is it that much? I didn't think it was that much.
For at our. At our level, what they explained to us was, we're gonna be on the more expensive side because we. Cannot. Treat that many, so I was gonna set aside anywhere between five to ten thousand for us to start. And that's only gonna treat about a hundred trees. It's not a lot, it's fifty dollars per tree.
I think that that's something that we could look at reasonably of residents, the trees are there, it's kind of a service to the residents that we would provide. And, and we'll have to look at that, put it on agenda. And if you want it, I have two black olives in front of my house, I would pay for that, you know, because I mean, I'm, I love the trees, they provide shade. They're, they're messy and if, you know, I'd be willing. To um, just like you would if, you know, if you have lawn. You know, a service that you would ask them to treat it for you, if the city can provide that, you'd be, so we'll look at that, I'll. Talk with Roger and see about putting it on a future meeting, I just didn't know if that was something you had kind of massaged in this.
Yes, we did.
Uh, what's the timeline on the, on the uh fence at the end of Okina?
Um, the fence was already fabricated, it's in the painting stage.
Okay.
It should be here. Within the week or so.
And then once it gets here, will it take you a long time to install it?
No, that's a couple hours.
I guess there was an accident.
Oh, there was an accident.
And.
Keen aside there.
Yeah. And that's, that's the comfort suites and I think the back of the days in, and now they, that fence has been down and so, and I'm a couple blocks away, so I hear it. From the residents, they, they really want that fence back. Okay.
Through the chair, yes. That accident, was it coming from outside of Miami Springs into, from, from the hotel into the?
Don't know exactly whether, but the car was on the other side of the fence.
Was there a police report filed?
Ah, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so he can subrogate and, and get the costs back.
Correct, as soon as all of that is part of our normal procedure, so as soon as we get the bill. For the replacement of the fence, we pass that on to Bill. So, pictures, police report, all of that.
And then that he sends to the.
To the insurance and we get reimbursed for it.
To whose insurance, to our insurance?
To whoever the one that hit the fence.
Okay, okay, you got. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Again, thank you guys, please, thank your staff. Okay.
Yeah, more good news, Chris? You're gonna get more money, what's going on?
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we were on, um, I went back and forth.
The next fund is the road and transportation fund in section fifteen. That fund has a twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollar increase from the prior year or three percent.
Section which one?
Fifteen. There was some minimal changes in salaries and benefits there and there's an increase of forty-one thousand in repairs and maintenance.
Is this the shuttle?
No, this is the CITT fund and the majority of that increases to repair sidewalks throughout the city.
Yes, the sidewalks, if you notice this year. Uh, we went really, really heavy. Sidewalks and replacements and connectivity. Um, and. Real hard with William to um come up with the numbers and then. This guy. And our streets foreman was out there at seven oh five with the contractor, making sure. Um, that we met and we still have a lot to go, which is what you're looking at here, so this is all money that we have. Um, through CITT, so it's not general fund.
Nice.
Future, that includes all of London, of course, you guys are doing that work, London.
Like that.
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
A lot of residents, they're really happy with that, that we're doing that.
Do the chair, now that we're talking about Lululemon, do you have a lot of issues with the lighting on Lululemon by any chance, like outages, repairs or anything like that?
Not, nothing that's out of the norm. Um, it's just a, it's, there's no ballast, there's no transformer, there's just a simple light bulb, just like we have at home.
Okay.
It's an, and it's actually an LED light bulb.
Okay, so it's not.
Yeah.
Making it anywhere or time consuming.
No. And that actually um. Is funded through CITT, so it doesn't cost us.
Really? Let me tell you, I really like the lighting on Virginia Gardens, have you seen their lighting? Yeah, it's more coverage, it's just makes sense and it's less light, it's less. Have you seen Virginia Gardens, all nice, that's coming out?
Yeah.
You know. The, the, there are long black posts and it's very um city like, it's cute, so in the future, if you guys, if that's CITT covered. That will look not only nice, but more functional. I walk there and I sometimes and it's really, really dark.
The four hundred volumes?
But then how many less you have to like, really like, cut the grass around, remember? And like cutting the grass around, I remember that conversation very clearly.
We got a grant for the, the lights, for the light.
Yeah.
Path, for the bike path, we got a grant form a long time ago to illuminate it because, right, right, you know, uh, that was after the bike paths were put in to. Pursue lighting so that people could walk.
And it's one every like, I don't know how many feet apart. Just throwing it out there.
Yeah, there's four hundred of a month.
Generally, you, you really don't have to repair the, I mean, you don't have to really replace too many and even from car accident, no.
Places.
Very little.
The only place is that little entrance when you're coming on to London, like crane. Yeah.
Yeah.
When you're coming in right there, uh, yeah, for some reason or another.
A dingler.
Yeah, a car or two, you know, every couple of years.
Why are we throwing these things? It doesn't seem like we need to.
I called me to, to tell him it would look really nice. Alright.
Okay, um, any other questions on this? Good, alright.
Next section, section is the sanitation, section nineteen.
The sanitation budget is a hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight twenty-two. Increase from the prior year. Um, and then the, the, the majority of the increase here is fifty thousand dollars in dumping fees and a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in recycling fees.
Can we recoup that through? Enterprise fund? Recoup any of this? These increases or no? We recoup.
We're recuperating, recouping back the majority of it now.
Not all of it, some of it.
I will have to bring before you on Wednesday. The numbers specifically for sections nineteen and twenty. To show what we're gonna recover in revenue. Against the expenses. I don't have the exact numbers this evening, but I'll show you on Wednesday at the third workshop.
Any questions? Next one is the stormwater uh fund, section twenty.
Overall, the stormwater fund is a hundred and thirty-one thousand, one eighty-four less than last year. And that's primarily due to a decrease of a hundred and seventy-five thousand approximately in professional services that was grant funded related to a project. And also in this fund, you'll see we have a thirty-four thousand dollar increase in. Property insurance in the liability section as well. Similar to other funds that we've already discussed.
Now, why would that be an increase in liability this?
The stormwater infrastructure? It's an asset.
I see that um in a lot of these um. Salary positions, it's vacant. We have several vacancies.
We're working on um with Bill on establishing a. We've had some. Tough times uh filling vacancies in all our departments. And getting quality.
I can tell you that's. Everywhere. Of, of, well, not just cities, employers everywhere.
So we've worn many hats um as a result of it. Um, but hopefully we can. Get some good people on board pretty soon. Crossing our fingers that we do. You know, anybody that wants to cut grass? That wants to stay here more than.
More than, more than, more than an eight hour day.
Mayor and council since I've been here, I mean, Liz, Laz and the payroll, there's been. Four or five people that have come and gone in just the four months that I've been here and. Some start for a couple of days and then three days later they decide the job's not for them or they've taken another position.
Yep. So, it's been a revolving door.
Yes. I've, I've heard that from. Another races too, or, or that an employee shows up and goes for lunch, not in our city, it doesn't return. It happens, uh, and it, and it's not just in the public sector, it's happening in the private sector and everywhere, it's. So weird.
And we try and, you know, make it. Nice and homey and.
Right, right.
You know. We don't sugarcoat it before he, they get on boarded, I mean, Laz, I think just paints the worst picture in the world and they still accept the position.
Is there anybody on the roster? Uh, or any, you know, whatever, that was maybe looking for more um. Things to do that may wanna, they're already working for you, that may want to pay for. An additional increase, you can go ahead and take the position of doing whatever's that you need to do, so you know the deal with a revolving door. I don't know, leave it up to you. It's not like our recruiting, it's just an additional task.
Trained, um, our folks, that's another thing that um he's been able to accomplish outside. Uh, to cross train. Uh, folks, I've taken care of cross training all of the inside staff, so all the administration, administrative staff. Um, as much as I can and I'm just waiting for one more really good person. Um, I think that the opportunities are there, it's um, do they want it? And to have the extra responsibility. Uh, anything else that we have available is an extra responsibility. So.
Our revolving doors in the. Public properties and all the guys that mow the grass.
Which is the lowest paid positions in the city.
When you come. Cause in other cities, you apply for a truck driver, you go straight to truck driving, or you apply for a crane operator, a backhoe operator. All cities are big, we're small, so you start from the bottom. And as you show that you want the will, attendance. Uh, no callouts, um, then you get to move, you get to move up. But you started the bottom. We all did.
I started way bottom.
I started.
And I'm proud of it.
Twenty-three years ago. Um, in two thousand, I started in the bottom and. There was room to grow and you wanted it and showed the skills and passed the test. Cause, just cause you come to work, that, well, you get the job.
Okay.
Proof to me that you can do it, that you know how to operate it, you're functional, you. Just sort of.
So you don't see anybody that would be willing to cut the grass.
Well, yeah, but then I gotta fill. The next spot.
What do you mean?
Well, when, if that one.
Creates a vacancy from where that.
No, 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 they continue to do what they're doing, it's just an additional, like, some, someone that's already kind of like a maintenance, that's everything they're doing, it would complement their job. It goes hand in hand and then you maybe just.
I, there, right now, any of the positions that we have. Um, you, it's not a dual role.
Yeah, it's a full eight hour.
It's a full eight hour.
Eight hour.
So you, you, let's say.
Got, oh, I see.
Working in what they're working now, it requires them to be there eight hours.
Yeah.
Don't have any spare time to take on another task.
Got it.
That makes sense, so you, you're, you're. You need to drive between seven and three forty-five.
Okay.
Uh, there's not a break in between. We wish there was.
That, that would be good though, but.
Yeah.
Like in rotation, just not necessarily maybe one person, just like in a rotation, like one day Fulani do this part, the other, the Fulani do this part, it's not like just that one person.
Right, and then now you have the issue with having a backup that is able to backfill while that person is doing that other job. So it's it's um it's a delicate balance.
Mm hmm.
Um because every day, everybody doesn't come to work. And you have vacations. So as much as we have been able to get a couple of guys that are are do have CDLs and we can put them out there. Um then you have a vacation, um then you have a guy that got called out sick or.
And the glass cutters are full time?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, yeah.
And we still don't have enough.
Yeah, to be honest, we still don't have enough.
Yeah, vacation.
Not to do what.
Let me ask you a question, back to the chair. Um, I mean, I don't know much about this, but I don't know how much it would be to. Um, outsource that too. I mean, if we don't have enough personnel, we start adding in employees, what would be like maybe an annual contract with a. When that cuts grass out, they have a bigger manpower.
Yeah.
To.
The perception is that there is a bigger manpower, um and and there's not. Um we've I myself have spoken to a lot of these um landscape companies. And a lot of what they promise is not what you get. Um and we try, I think the type of training that we give our guys. Um to specialize and we really dedicate a lot of time to the skill of what we're doing. And learning all the different machines, cause one guy can cut the grass, but you have the weedy, but you have the edge, but you have the. You know, so there's other tasks besides just the mower.
No, I know, but somewhere a commercial, a commercial landscaper that they spend, it's expensive.
It's expensive.
And.
It'll be a lot more than the sixteen dollars an hour that we're paying plus even plus benefits.
That department just doesn't mow lawn, although they're eight hours a day, but. Any special event, any functions, um they put up the stage, take down the stage at the at the theater. Um, they play like a playhouse.
Oh, you do that for private functions too or no?
Uh, no, no.
No, just sitting, oh, okay.
Or city function, but not the their main role is landscaping. But they're used, they're used in any other thing that we need.
Okay.
Uh River City Festival, setting up barricades, um.
The holiday decorations along the street lights.
So this, we say public property is just landscaping, but there's. There's.
Other, other, oh, okay.
Their main thing is that, but they do a little bit of it.
Overall operation.
Yeah, they they're they're everywhere.
And with the storm season, then there's all kinds of responsibility, getting ready for a storm, post-storm, like there's all kinds of things.
Say cutting grass, cutting grass, but honestly, they do wait more.
It's the staff that you draw from.
Do more than, than just cut grass.
Any other questions?
I had a question that probably should have brought up during road and transportation, but. The decorative street lights that are on thirty sixth street when you start from from uh from the Polietro Pical. On, are those our response, is that F dot?
No, those are Miami Dade County.
That's the county. Okay, I think I had brought this up to to Tammy, but the the two street lights that are on either side of the intersection of Sheridan. On thirty sixth street have like a.
That cord.
Wire.
Wire.
Running from one light to the the they're the only street lights.
Reported it to the county.
Have a wire and it like kind of dips kind of low and it kind of looks. Any update on the petrified tree uh on Royal Point Sienna?
County.
Yes. Has that been reported?
I read that on the app, I've reported on my per on the app personally. I've reported on the app through the city and I, oh, in thirty days we'll let you know. It's the same thing with the pines and I mean, they, I know they have a new company, so maybe we'll get lucky. Um because they've hired a new, a new treat, a new landscape company to do the schools.
I've spoken with Commissioner Cabrera about the um Australian pines on uh by the high school, which really bother me. They really concern me because we've got about two dozen of them and.
There's fifty two of them.
Fifty two, whoa, I thought it was like two dozen and they're side by side, they have greatly. You know, overcome the space that they have in the swale. Um there uh we're losing limbs right and left, I've let them know they're county trees, they're not school board, it's county. Um that's county trees and um. You know, I've asked that they have them removed because they're going to really hurt someone, they either fall on school property. And damage to the building or its students, or they fall on the road where we have cars, it's a really busy street, so he his office is looking at. Um but I've told them it's, you know, that's county property and it they need to be removed, they're. Uh way too many of them and they're older, they've gotten to the point where.
Now they're getting sprouts, so if you drive by, they're getting sprouts, so those sprouts eventually.
Right.
Are gonna turn into a mature tree.
Right, but that's something that the county has to do for them. Their property, it's.
You know, it's funny, everybody loved those trees on Ludlam where I was going up, but they are messy.
Yeah, well, the problem is when they get too tall like this, on Ludlam at least, they were, you know, further, this is like, right? There's nowhere for them to fall and if and if one falls, it could knock off, it could be a domino and you know, and knock off, I mean, there's just. All these scenarios there that they just need to be removed.
Properly, yes, the answer to the question of replacing them.
With with oak trees or something, okay.
Or Royal Point Sienna. You know, I won't.
That's the county's responsibility, so I guess they'll they'll plant in the trees, right?
Let's get them to remove it first. I all I've asked is to remove them, we'll talk about, you know, I said, if you remove them, we'll, you know, take care of that.
The chair, uh references, I think we talked about it before, but on Curtis Parkway, both sides is lighting, that's all. FP FP and L.
It's FPL, um they've having some underground issue going from say. Huntilage from the golf course to the circle, it's been out, we've called, finally they energized them, but now they're on twenty four seven. I guess we called so much that now they're energized. For some odd reason, now going from the circle down towards the golf course.
Right.
Was off, but they came out and. Last known, they were on twenty four seven, both sides. Usually, once a week, I'll, since I get to work early in the morning. Still dark, I drive, I drive through the where we've had complaints, multiple complaints being Curtis Parkway, one of them. Um, last time I was by there, they were they were on, right? Tomorrow morning, I'll try.
Been struggling with uh between Miami Dade County and FPL to try and get, I mean, for as long as I've been here and. Yesterday, yesterday, that is Monday, oh, yesterday was five years, um forgot about that. So in the five years that I've been here, I know that that has been a struggle. To keep those lights on, so.
Any other questions? I I have one more since we're asking about all these, we have you right here. Is the lights on westward on the the trees in the median and westward? Are they there right now or they're not there right now? What's happening with that? The ones that the um.
Are there?
Okay.
Talking about the new.
Well, the the first two blocks are there, but they're not lit sometimes.
To look at the timer.
Okay, can you look and see because I know this past or last weekend, I can't remember, I was surprised on a weekend night that they weren't lit.
When it rains a lot, the GFI.
Okay, okay.
That's the purpose of them, so when there's humidity, they trip, so we'll have to go out there and just reset them, the ones that are have tripped.
Okay, and the lighting, I know we budgeted to put electric. Electricity or upgrade the electricity in the median a few years back for this purpose. Is that all the way through westward or we've only done the first two blocks?
Only the first two blocks.
So to do the next two blocks, we have to budget that and that was like about thirty thousand back then.
It's over thirty thousand.
Per block or for the two blocks?
Um the two blocks.
Two blocks.
The cost of the lights.
Right, which the cost of the lights were, well, the lights themselves were donated by.
Some business owners.
Business owners, road, every club members and a whole bunch, and I'm sure that they'll do that again.
The first go, the first go around.
The first go around.
Yes.
Because they do.
Right.
Short out, they.
They go bad.
Burn out, the tree grows and breaks them, so the first go around, yes, it was.
Which last probably, I don't know, when I put out lights outside, it lasted about a year and then nice.
Are those commercial lights, great or?
Yeah, but they're twenty four seven out of the element, you know, um and we do turn them on Christmas. We have them twenty four hours now, the off season, um I think the timers one, two in the morning. Cause from two to two on, there's really not a lot of action strings. So and just to give a little time for them to, you know, get a little more life off.
Right.
If you could check on them and see if, because they're so pretty when they're on, they really light up westward, let me mention them. Okay, anything else?
Yeah.
Nope, thank you.
Still in another section?
Oh, they're done.
Thank you.
Done, thank you. Department is the building department, section twenty one.
Okay. You miss these, Rosemary.
I don't have any on the wishlist.
The building department had an overall decrease.
Yeah.
From the prior year of thirty thousand five twenty seven. There was an increase in salaries and benefits. There was a decrease in machinery and equipment of twenty seven thousand. And we have a few more details on some specific accounts in there on repairs and maintenance contractual spending and the sixty four hundred account.
Hi, guys, how are y'all?
How are you?
Good. We have any questions?
Um, you miss these.
And also one more thing, obviously, this fund is a separate fund from general fund, is the building fund, which is funded with building fund revenues, which.
This is an enterprise fund.
It's a special revenue fund, but yes, it raises its own revenue and its own separate budget, not taxpayer funded through the military. The budgeting for revenue for this year is nine hundred and twenty one thousand approximate. And you have about one point one in expenses. But they have a surplus from the prior year, actually a fiscal twenty two audit of one point five million dollars in surplus for the fund from past years.
Through the chair.
Yes. Can we get one of these when you can, Ulysses, I don't, I don't have it in the binder unless you guys have it, I don't have it. It's a really good picture to look at.
What is that, I'm sorry?
It's the gold objective, the projections, revenues. No, 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 just.
We can give you copies of it on Wednesday.
Perfect. Helps me a lot.
Ulysses, you. You got a new code enforcement officer? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's for building, for building. Yes. Thank you.
You got a code, new code enforcement officer last year.
Yes, we got a new code compliance officer by the name of Carlos to replace Amy. So we're back to the same.
So we have three or two right now, we have three.
Three, one right now, it's on.
Right, maternity, okay, right. But last year was when we went up to one more, right?
Yes.
Okay, how's that working out? With the the new.
It's always good to have extra eyes out there, uh we still have Carlos doing license. And Airbnb and and um. So uh maybe next year or if we get it, get the budget approved, the way that I that I'm presenting it. Uh we may have uh Merlin's, which is a co com uh building specialist do some of the clerical work. Of the co compliance and that'll that'll leave Carlos more time out there to uh do his inspections and and just be out there, you know.
When you're saying he's doing license licenses, um.
BTR, uh business tax license, yeah.
Okay.
Airbnbs and what else?
So he's splitting his time basically from, he's not a hundred percent code enforcement because he's doing the business tax receipt licenses. That actually we just mailed out uh within the last two weeks to all of the the new businesses for renewal for this um upcoming year.
Who was doing that before?
Amy.
Amy.
Amy and Amy came to me as procurement, so I'm. Amy came from the building department.
Right, okay.
Never had three full time co compliance officers, we've always had to deal with a license.
Mm hmm.
Some way.
Which is. The inspectors, we have, we have full time inspectors or they're all part time?
Code?
Huh? Oh, it's fu- full time?
So I just want to make sure, cause we keep talking about code.
We have for, is that another section then?
Yeah, so. For building now.
Okay, okay, okay.
But if you guys want to talk about code, we can go to that section, which is section eleven.
I I'm asking for the inspectors that we have for say electrical and um.
They're all part timers.
They're all part timers.
As needed basis.
So these salaries here for building for the inspectors are the part time.
But we're trades, right, you're you're mechanical, you're electrical, you're plumbing.
Clerks, my salary, the clerks.
Yes.
No, no, I know, but the ones.
She's looking at that particular line.
Looking at that particular line, which is inspectors, that's correct.
Those are for the.
That's for the inspectors.
The the electrical roofing mechanic, you know, the mechanical, the plumbers.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Do you know from the top of your head how many part timers you have in your department?
Inspectors?
No, overall.
No, just inspectors.
Just the inspectors, okay.
That's pretty typical, sorry, through the chair, that's typical in in the industry.
Typical in small cities like like these, where we can afford to have a full time. Like Tammy was saying, a full time mechanical inspector that we have to pay him, you know, um. Benefits, exactly, so for cities like this, it's very typical. And I didn't create that, I was here before, I was a building official, but seems to work, so I.
Through the chair.
Mm hmm.
What what would the cost have been, Ulysses, to to find somebody to take over some of the clerical off Carlos so that he could do more code compliance?
It's on the code section, uh I did.
Oh, I was looking for it and I couldn't find it in the wishlist.
No, I, we put it as far as the.
It's a budgeted item in section eleven, it's a twenty six thousand dollar and maybe twenty eight thousand with the FICA taxes included. Part time or twenty nine hours.
Okay, so that'll free him up to be able to. Do more code compliant, sorry, I'm jumping to code compliant, sorry.
Ulysses, the inspectors that we have, um the part time inspectors, and I understand, you know, I know years and years ago, um. You know, and this is pretty consistent with other small cities, but um how does that work? They're on a certain day and if there's something for them to do, they do it, or is it on call or? I guess what I'm asking is um uh the the time that they're here. Um are they, is it utilized?
Oh, one hundred percent, yeah.
One hundred percent.
Building and roofing is the most. Most, the most amount of inspections that we get is building roof, building roof is every day.
Okay, so they're not sitting around just, you know, here waiting and you know, no one's asking for.
If there's no inspection, they don't work, so, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
It's per inspection.
By.
They're paid by per inspection.
Inspection or review.
So they're not um here a certain day and if there's nothing in front of them, that's.
They're here certain days only if they have inspections to review in the office, which would be. The plan review, somebody brings, a homeowner brings in a plan, they have to review it for any of their plumbing, mechanical, electrical or any of those. So that's the in-house type of reviews that Ulysses is talking about, which there's always.
Yeah, there's always something to do.
Um and then there's also the actual, it's, you know, um in the field inspections that are done. Per inspe, there's a cost associated with that and they they only get the cost. Per inspection.
Through the chair.
So it's not like they're here five hours and they don't have five hours worth of work, no, they're here as needed. For desk review as needed for out out uh in field inspections, so.
Through the chair, yes. Ulysses, you mentioned that uh between building and roofing, it's almost like an everyday thing.
Yeah.
So would it be beneficial for you to have a full time building and and roof inspector versus being up?
Suspections to keep the cost low.
But you're too busy.
Yeah.
So I'm.
We could entertain, you know, that, but it's.
I'd rather for you to be operating your department and having your.
I'm pretty much in the office the entire day, but like, for example, my roof, my roofing inspector went on vacation, they're going on vacation, but he took some time off. So I'm doing some other roofing inspections now, so. I I don't think we're gonna be able to afford a full time inspector at ninety thousand dollars plus.
A hundred thousand, plus benefits.
Okay.
Plus the fish.
Let me, let me slow down a little bit, because I know that we have staggered inspection days and that's delaying the process, as you know. For getting a mechanic, cause mechanical may be uh Tuesdays and Wednesdays and then you may have plumbing, you know, Thursdays and Fridays, so. It becomes a little bit staggered, right, so looking at it from your perspective, what would be your ideal operational, logistically? To get your your cases coming and going, cause if you have.
Funds to have a an uh a part time inspector for each trade to come in, let's say, every day. In the mornings, you know, for part time, you know, that'll be great, but nobody wants to do that.
What do we pay, nobody wants to work part time either, so what do we pay a part timer, I don't even know. What do we pay? Nobody wants to work part-time either. So what do we pay a part-timer? I don't even know.
It's not that, it's just they're not going to stop doing what they're doing to come and sit down for four hours, sometimes just, you know, doing nothing. When they could do other cities and make money in other cities. It's not, it's not feasible for them.
So these, these inspectors, can they, can they do multiple types of inspection? Or they're just specified? Can you get a well-rounded person that can do?
They're specific to the trade.
Yes, but I, I did just bring in somebody that does plumbing and building and roofing. And that has allowed me to be more flexible with the plumbing inspector, because remember they're coming from another city. They finish at three thirty, they'll come over here, if, if they're, if they have a lot of reviews, then the inspections get delayed. Typically I give priority to the inspections, so they don't have, you know, I don't have, I don't have homeowner waiting for an inspector to show up at seven o'clock at night. So he'll do the inspections and then he'll come next day, pick up the plans. But i-if, if I see that they're, they're not picking up the plans. I call them up, see if they could pass by the next day, but that's why I got somebody right now to, just recently hired him, maybe a month ago. Um, Ozzy. And, uh, he does the three roofing, building and plumbing. So if the plumbing inspector didn't come in today because it was raining and he didn't pick up plants. Well, Ozzy will come in the next day and pick up plants.
Doing it gives him enough to do. So he has his day busy, you know, to maximize that.
There, there is no city, uh, Jackie, that will give you. That service where you have a, a part-time inspector just sitting.
No, no, not sitting. I'm just, I mean, if we're not busy enough.
Mechanical inspectors, uh, he comes twice a week and sometimes there's something for him to do. So he doesn't, you know, he'll go straight to Virginia Gardens where he works or two. So if I have him there sitting. For four hours, just in case somebody brings a, a, uh. A mechanical hermit. I'm losing money. He just gets paid, I think, uh, four hundred dollars, you know, uh, every time he shows up. He's the least paid. If I will have to hire him part-time, that he's going to be at the same rate as the others.
Through the chair, in reference to like the part-timers that you got for inspections, like how you handle their vacation, that's where it seems like a lot of people. When they do complain is that they have to wait for the next inspector to come in.
I got a backup for every single. Uh, discipline and in, in an emergency, I can, I can approve. As a building official.
You can do all right, yes.
Okay. I try not to do that, because I'm not an expert on, on each discipline, but you know, if it's an emergency, I'm, I'm there. But I have a backup for everybody.
You do, okay.
Anything else with the building department? Okay.
So now we can jump to section eleven, which is the code.
The code budget increased forty-six thousand, six hun- six hundred and eighty dollars or fifteen percent from the prior year. For a total budget of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand oh fifty-six. And we have budgeted revenues in the fund of a hundred and ninety thousand, so there's a net cost for this department of a hundred and sixty-seven oh fifty-six. And like we've already discussed, there's, there's increases in salaries and benefits. There is a new part-time position as we discussed for the twenty-six thousand. And minimal increases in the operating expenses for the department.
What was the?
Trust fund twice in.
Twenty-one.
I don't have code compliance. I don't have the code compliance. No. I have.
I need that form too, for this section, that you have it, but I don't, I can't.
Yeah, I'll have to give you some that we missed. There's, I think, two for them and the one for HR I have to give on Wednesday.
Do we have the car? I know, uh, the vehicle per code.
We do. We just got it.
We just got it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are we paying for it this year? We had already paid for it.
It was budgeted and it was paid for.
Or it will be paid for if it hasn't been already this, this fiscal.
Yeah, it's gonna be in this fiscal year, yes.
Any questions for code compliance? How is the, well, we have you the app working that see click fix? App? Is that generating? A lot of, no, um.
Code hasn't gotten too many. It's been mainly public works, you know, streetlights, potholes, things of that nature, but it's been more so public works than code.
Okay, through the chair, I have feedback on that, um, cause a lot of residents, they continue to. Reach out to me and I tell them, use the app, you know, we've got an emails and we continue and they, they just. They don't feel comfortable because they're like, I know it could be tracked and I don't want somebody to get mad or anything. So I have this like speculation of that it's gonna get, you know, they're gonna be targeted. I don't know if there's a way to. Well, around that, no, yeah, so.
Even if they were to report it directly to the code enforcement officer, they still have to, they have to provide their name. And information, it's Florida statute. There's no other ways around it.
Well, through the Florida statue as well, I forwarded to William last year where I was pretty much victimized myself because I provided pictures. And it says there in the statue, should the person that's filing the complaint provides pictures and it's clearly shows that there's a hazard or something that's. Not in compliance with your code, they can remain anonymous now. If they're gonna file complaint and not provide images at all. They cannot be anonymous and or if code compliance rules out that there is no threat, they do not become anonymous. There was a little trick, a little, I have it there, I'll share it with you.
Okay.
But I, it's just, you know, we, we're paying to use it. We thought it was gonna be a really good tool.
Well, it is, it is, but they, they said. Public works, but you know, that's the thing is every, you know.
Warming up.
I think people have to realize, look, it's either important enough. For you to make the complaint and get it resolved, or you're just going to ignore it. I mean, it's kind of one of those things, unfortunately that, um, you know. Uh, you, you have to, and if it's hazardous enough. How would you know until you send the photo and submit it in, you know, um. Always, you know, if there's something that's an imminent danger on anything, you should call the police. Because and the police can, you know, and I mean Miami Springs police and then the police can direct you, but anything else, um, it's, you know, it's just the process. Of getting something done, um.
It's a life safety issue, believe me. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, I think the, the law was created so that we don't get used as tools.
Mm-hmm.
To punish.
Which is what happens sometimes with resident, no, with residents, they start a fight with each other and then it's constantly, I'm calling them on you, but you don't know who's calling them, so it's kind of to deal with. That kind of issue, right? And not use up staff time and like everything else, you know, there's, there's consequences, um.
I like the program personality. I think it holds accountability. The follow-up has been good.
What I think residents like too is that there's an ability there to get, you know, find out what, you know, what's the status of your request and, and like I tell residents, sometimes it's like. You'll know it's already been reported and you know it's already, but sometimes it's like, you know, and assume we don't know, assume the city has, you know, you're the first one telling us not. Why that's been there for two weeks, why hasn't it, no, you assume that we don't know about it, let us know, and if we know about it and we're ordering a part or there's a work order, whatever. You know, we'll let you know, but, um, you know, that, um. Our residents are our eyes and ears on things. And yes, unfortunately it was, you know, I, my. Understanding of, of why that all started is to not use city staff as tools, you know, for feuds between neighbors.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Just a quick question. The part-time compliance officer, that's what we were talking about earlier, right?
Yes, sir.
Just someone that's gonna be hired or you've already hired?
It's up to you, the council and the mayor to vote for it and.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
I did want to say something about the building department. Uh, I don't know if the wishlist, if the, that. Door. So we get through.
It's not there.
I don't have the wishlist for the building department.
Little heaven.
I, 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 the only thing that I really wanted on the building code. Building budget was to have some type of protection. Uh, from the public, you know, as far as like a, maybe a, a. Storefront door. Or like a banker's window, maybe we'll, like a teller's window, uh, cause we get some. We get some.
Unique.
Homeowners, yes, thank you. Unique homeowners that come in and, and. Uh, not so much at our office, but here in the, uh, special magistrate, I don't know if you've seen the videos, uh, there was one gentleman that had to be escorted out by police. Uh, and the police was here and he was cursing up a storm and I could just imagine that person coming into the building department. Where you could just walk in, is the only department you could walk in without a, without a badge.
There's, there's not a little.
There is a badge. There is, but it's, it's, it doesn't, because they'd be clicking the door all day long if they, if they had.
We have to see them too. We just can't, you know, if they come in and you have a, a, it's not to be bulletproof, but maybe like an impact storefront.
It provides some distance.
Just to have some type of, yes, distance between. The unique.
Uh-huh.
People out there that can, you know, we, we, like I said last year, her job is, is a very thankless job. She goes out there and Carlos and Amy, when she was doing co-compliance and. She, she, she does deliver a lot of bad news. You wanna keep the city beautiful, you have to, you know, you have to keep it that way. You have to go out there, send a.
People aren't banking for the citations, right?
So, and she could tell you herself, she's got dogs chasing after her with the homeowner right there. Somebody threw a shot at you one time or something. I'm just kidding, no, but she, she gets a lot of. You know.
I've been threatened.
Yes.
They're gonna shoot.
Yeah, so.
Well, you should report that if they're gonna threaten you, you have to report to the police, right?
She's gone with, she's gone many occasions with Officer Capote. He calls him immediately if she feels.
And they give that owner a, a notice, right?
I don't know if they've gone that far, but.
They, uh, posted citations for me, summons. The dumbest thing, it's for a vote, you would think.
Um, so Ulysses, what, what, instead of a door, maybe, I mean, cause you have to.
Well, you're gonna need a door and.
No, she's saying a door and glass.
And closing that, like.
Can you get us an idea of what we're talking about cost?
Around five thousand dollars, I think, is what.
Okay.
We, we have included five thousand dollars in the budget, so that's why it wasn't on the wishlist. It's in the building departments.
The budget.
It is, there is a capital item there aligned for five thousand.
So that's already, okay.
Whether we did just plexiglass or changed an entire door plus plexiglass depends the cost to go up.
Think that's reasonable and I think, you know, considering, um. That. The, I was gonna say the clientele, the emotions that take place sometimes when.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I've worked in two different places where that was a problem. And in one place in Miami, they college, it took me almost five years. I was the only department on the whole building that didn't have that. People just walk in and before you know it, they're right there in front of your door. I mean, that's, you can't have that. It's a, it's a real security issue.
So that's already in the budget and what we're looking at, it's not a wishlist item and it's five thousand dollars.
Through the chair, just to clarify, so you want a door and a plexi at the counter or just a plexi?
Is for our access to.
Well, for you to get in.
There's a little office there where we have the water and where the inspectors sit to do the reviews. And as long as you have one of these, you could come in and out of the office, no problem. But if somebody comes in. And it could be, you know, they're violent or they're, you know, whatever the mood is, you know, at least there's something there, a barrier to. Yeah, separate, you know.
Discourages, right.
And.
I just don't know if we're talking about the door or where.
Beyond the door, beyond the door, there's a little, um, push door.
Yeah.
Yeah, I never understood why we even had that.
That's, so that's the door that he's asking to be replaced, to be added there. And then a replace that, and then the window would continue as an L kind of.
Correct.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Maybe a hole is something that we.
Yeah, cause I've seen people go in there, like if they own his office, I mean, what are you doing? Like they just go in and I, I didn't, I don't see how that's very conducive.
I'll be the first to.
So you're getting interrupted all day.
Yeah, no, I mean, I enjoy the interaction.
Yeah, but no.
But I just don't want to take the chance with what I've seen so far.
Yeah, no, no, no. I mean, other cities have that, like I've seen that, it's common.
Yeah. Anything else? You just have to make sure you put enough space at the bottom to pass the plans, that it's not a tiny little teller's window, you know, it has to be, right, right? Roll it up. Um. Anything else? Hey, thank you so much again for your department too. I know it's, it's, uh, very often thankless work, right? Where you hear the complaints and, uh, you know. It's taking too long and yes, but we greatly appreciate it. It's something that's so important for, for our depart, um, for our city. To keep growing, expanding, getting better and, um, and the code enforcement is also such a critical part of that. So thank you very much and thank your staff for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Thank you guys.
Next on our list is the planning department, which is section eight. And that's for our, um. CGA, our hired consultants. Um, Sylvia apologized, she is not here this evening. She is very under the weather. Um, and Alex wasn't able to make it to this evening, but they will be here. One of the two of them will be here on Wednesday when we finalize our workshops. Um, but Sylvia did, as promised, she did update and provide me, uh, today with an update of the wishlist items. As she had mentioned at the last council meeting, so I have that and I'll pass that out to each and every one of you.
Thank you.
In the actual budget. The proposed budget is twenty-two thousand, two eighty-eight, greater than last year or twenty-four percent. And the budget summary has budgeted revenues of approximately forty-one thousand, expenses of a hundred and sixteen thousand at a net cost of seventy-five. Thousand, six hundred and twelve. And as you all know, I mean, we've changed the budget. Chris is no longer here. We've outsourced the department to CGA at a cost of approximately a hundred thousand dollars. And we still have in the salary position Sandra, which is budgeted in this department at twenty-five percent.
Crystal, for the budgeted revenues of the forty thousand, where are those revenues coming from again? The people are worrying, applying for zoning changes as. Not too familiar.
Yeah, they are for your zoning fees and miscellaneous plan reviews.
So the. CGS is, is listed here under professional services.
Yeah, that's CBA, which is Sylvia and, um, Alex.
Through the chair. Yes, just a question. So I see we went up, obviously we went up a hundred thousand because we let go of. Okay, so there's a price difference because we got CGA now.
That's correct.
So I'm a little bit confused, is your contract for the. The thirty-one thousand?
So their contract right now for, uh, the new, the upcoming fiscal year is gonna be for a hundred thousand. So that hundred thousand is budget, no. That hundred thousand dollars is budgeted to do the day-to-day operations of just the planning, um, services. What you have before you is that's the wishlist items that we talked about at the last meeting, which is some of the items that we. May or may not have to add on, which includes like the rewrite of the Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street and some of those other items. This was, uh, revised to, to include some of the other items that were discussed that, that evening. So this would be above and beyond as special projects in addition to this, um. Yes.
The one that we, that we went under contract for, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, the day-to-day is the hundred thousand dollars, which is the one that we just increased, uh, by the eleven thousand.
So I added all that up and if we. Don't include. Don't include, if we only include the things that are color-coded, which means that we're leaving out the things that are not colored. Which is not strategically significant, not urgent. Priority four. So if we just focus on priorities, one, two, and three, comes out to a hundred and forty eight thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars.
I'm confused. Is that a hundred and forty eight thousand? That's in addition to the hundred thousand?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm very.
The hundred thousand is for them to show up here every Wednesday.
Day-to-day.
Day-to-day planning services that are provided to the homeowners. This. Handout that I just gave you is the wishlist that that Sylvia ran through with you um at the uh at the regular meeting, council meeting that evening.
So let me ask. You something, Tammy. When we had um a a planner.
Mm hmm.
These names, um and it was a part-time position, right? We were paying part-time, we weren't paying benefits. I mean, I see here it's like seventy thousand total. But um.
Was it part-time?
Were.
He was part-time, yeah.
Would they have, would that position have been doing this? Or would we, because I know when we.
Not to this level.
When we went with CGA, it's because um to fill the gap. So, you know, we decide later on whether we want to go back to hiring a part-time uh employee. Or continue with the services and and obviously CGA offers, you know, a great um. Uh, variety of professional services and expertise. But.
So these would be above and beyond and they would have been above and beyond, even if Chris is here.
Right.
Because that would be like the rewrite of the sign code that, you know.
So it wouldn't have been included in that part-time salary. So we're looking at right now is the difference in. The salary of the part-time person and um having CGA is um thirty thousand. Practical purposes, I guess, right?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I apologize. I just wanted to let you know that Sylvia may is available on Zoom. If you guys have any questions.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Sylvia. Okay, so either way, um this extra cost would not be covered by having the part-time. Okay.
Through the chair.
Yes.
So the thirty one thousand was just that simple little agreement that was term, it ends on a certain day. I can't remember what it is.
September thirtieth.
And then this this would take effect. So this is a.
The hundred thousand would we begin October first and it'll be through the entire fiscal year for the day-to-day.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's worth it. We're gonna be working a lot of large projects. I I wouldn't feel comfortable with one little city.
Oh, we would have had to alter it anyways. Expertise. We do, but it's I just wanted to make sure, you know, we're not talking about.
Yeah, it was.
Um, an additional. I mean, a cost that would have been absorbed the other way.
At least they got us established, so then when the dust settles, then maybe we could look at getting someone full-time because then we're already gonna have a lot of property. And zoning aspects that have already been con- uh concretized. And I don't know, I like having a company for this just for now. If they do something wrong, they're liable. I can't assume my employee like.
Councilman, I think when you added the wishlist and the colors, I got a different amount of a hundred and forty three fifteen. I think you added one of the eight thousands possibly. On the first number you.
Uh, I know I may have.
So what did you get, Chris?
I got a hundred and forty three fifteen on the colored items with the colors.
Uh, I've done it twice.
Either way, it's kind of in the general.
When he's saying colored items, he's meaning the blocks.
Right, I've got nine thousand.
You didn't have.
Twenty four thousand, five hundred, sixteen thousand. Yeah, I did add that eight thousand.
Yeah, I got one forty.
Two eights that don't have colors associated with them.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so then. So it's a hundred and forty, a hundred forty thousand, three fifteen then.
Correct.
To. Just the items that are not uh colored.
Not colored.
Did you say is what now? One forty three fifty.
Only colored.
Oh, a color, okay.
Which are the priority kind of.
It's one, what? Hundred and forty.
Okay, so they're gonna take care of the comprehensive, we don't have to worry about that anymore.
Yeah.
Remember we were going back and forth and we're.
It has a. Not my specialty. Even with my little calculator.
What you were wanting to get done.
So we're basically paying thirty three thousand dollars more than we were when we had our former planner who was part-time.
Yes.
We went from paying sixty three eight ninety seven to ninety seven one thirty three.
Well, a little more, we actually, because we were paying the FICA taxes, so if you add that, it's about seventy thousand.
Okay.
And cola.
All right.
So. Uh, no, I don't know. Does that position get cola? Do we have part-time positions? How does that work?
He did have some benefits. I don't know.
Just out of curiosity, do our.
I'd have to check on that and get back to. I'm not sure if he had.
Okay, but.
Benefits, vacation or cola. I'd have to check for Wednesday.
That was better. Okay, we're talking about seventy thousand compared to a hundred.
He came what, a couple of days a week?
He was here uh part-time two, two days a week.
Two days a week. Uh, I'm pleased with what we're getting from CGA compared to what we were getting from the part-time. Even though CGA is part-time also, but.
Well. Yes and no. They're part-time physically here in the office because they only come on Wednesdays, but they answer through that planning at um email.
Yes, and Sylvia, if you're on, um, thank you.
I think for twenty thousand, twenty-something thousand more, I think it's well worth it.
Yeah, they answer at all times.
Yeah, through the chair, I just to add to Tammy's point, though, legal also speaks with CGA. As planners.
On a daily.
Yep.
And I know that, you know, individual members of the council have also reached out to them as well, so. It's not just uh.
Mm hmm.
Yes.
And we are, you know, have a lot of things, the pipeline, so it's slightly decreased, okay. Are anything else? Sylvia, is is she on then? Okay, does anyone have any? Hi Sylvia, does anyone have any questions? For her?
Just let me know.
Feel better.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, I think we're good.
So if no other questions, we can move on to debt service section eighteen.
The debt service fund is approximately a hundred and thirty-three thousand or eight percent greater than last year for a total cost of one point eight million dollars. Basically, I mean, the largest change in this year from last year is. Yeah, the golf course loans towards the Bajin, there's a hundred and sixty-two thousand for principal and two hundred and twenty-six thousand for interest.
The chair, when did that start? The again, you remember? I know one of the months were included in that loan payments. I mean, the loan amount.
I believe it's, we started making a first interest payment two or three months ago.
I bet we use the funds from the loan to pay. It was like an amount that was to delegate it correctly, Tammy. Wasn't there an amount that was on that loan amount? That was set aside to pay the. First month or the first couple of months, something like that.
I'm not understanding.
Our reserves.
Yeah, there was no, at a loan payment or the money, the amount that we got from the bank. To do the, I mean, for the, for the project.
Okay, so.
In that amount, three and a half million dollars, there was an amount there paid to pay certain amount of months.
Yeah.
And I think that's the separation of these two accounts.
Okay.
These two debt service.
Those in there. Those two usually.
Yeah, but Chris didn't know when the actual loan started, so he can find out that information.
That's right.
Yeah, we'll give you further details on Wednesday.
For the, for the golf course.
Oh, yeah.
Three and a half million.
That was last year, no?
Three point eight.
Three point eight.
I didn't, three point eight?
Mm hmm.
Oh, yeah, it was. Um, okay, uh. Through the chair.
Yes.
Um, Chris, I know you just jumped on the bandwagon, but maybe I can get some refreshing or different answers. Um, on the depth cert on this page here, they provided. It says here. This fund accounts for the principal interest payments on all the city's depth, including a seven point five million. Community, okay, so I guess my question is, out of all of, all of the notes that we have. I I can recall, I just don't know what the current notes or interest rates are. Is there any opportunities for refinancing, refinancing on these types of loans? To bring down the monthly?
I mean, that's something that can be looked into, but interest rates right now are.
But maybe for these jumbo loans, maybe there. Maybe there's something in um in our notes or some sort of clause that. I would have to look at it.
Yeah, and I haven't, I haven't had the time, I haven't looked through all the notes and haven't had the chance to go through them all to see if there's any opportunities.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the cost right now to refinance these loans is probably not cost effective.
No, and but these are specialty loans, so there may be different clauses to that because.
There's always different.
There's always different um.
You'd have to look through them on a one-by-one basis. There could be prepayment penalties where you can't refinance. There's a lot of different things. They're all different. Some are for equipment, cars and golf carts, some are for the buildings. It's gonna be on a case-by-case basis. We'd have to check them one by one.
Okay. Nothing we can pay off here, obviously, right now. What is the the energy conservation note? Refresh me because I forgot. Do you know what's?
Yes, so um basically, I don't even know how many years ago, we had um Con Ed. Come into the city and they basically revamped all of the the lights and. Um, when you walk into some of these rooms, especially like my offices and some of the other other offices, the automatic lights come on and off. Um, that was part of the street lights that we had replaced all of the lighting for the uh FPNL lights. We had, we had done that. I'm sorry, the the city-owned lights. Um. So there was many renovations done here with all of our buildings and so that that is a loan that's being paid through.
Yeah.
But the amount in savings that we're getting back in the cost of not ha- of having LED lights versus the old lights should be. A complete wash to the loan within the twenty-five year, you know, year period.
So our total debt right now, the city under debt service would be, I mean, I couldn't get that, but it's not gonna be here. I would have to get that after because you know, just. These are the original note amounts. I wanted to see what what our balances are, but you can send that to me later.
I can bring you all a schedule for that on Wednesday because this is only the payments, not the outstanding balance.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris, do you have any suggestions on this with our debt service? On things we can possibly look at?
Like I said, I can, we'll take the time and go through them one by one to see what the interest rates are and what the terms are on each specific item to see if there's any possibilities on refinancing or. Somehow, you know. Paying one off in advance, if there's some type of savings there, but again, it's gonna cost money.
Yeah.
To get out of something where right now we're trying to look for savings.
An interest, interest rates were historically low for so long and not have gone up that it's likely most of these are. Very good interest rate. More likely that they're very good interest rates and that they're bad interest rates.
And interest, again, they're can still continuing to rise. I believe they just went up again in August a quarter before.
Okay. Any questions for Chris or Tammy on this?
And and truthfully, in retrospect, you know, all of the notes um. Are are very, very low in interest, you know, in in low in rates compared to.
I would expect them to be because we've had so many years of that until recently, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anything else, Tammy? We haven't done the senior center. Have we?
We did that at the last meeting.
We did, yes.
I totally. Don't remember.
That's why.
This is our last. This last, this is our last budget meeting, but um.
We do have a meeting Wednesday, Wednesday to kind of relook at everything. I'm gonna ask the council. To please look in the weeds, see what, you know, what we um can do to make it so that um I don't think any of us. Have any intention of raising the millage, so we're gonna have to figure out a way to work with. You know, the realities. Um. You know, see what you can find, look and and come up with.
Each and every one of you, I hope have, I have answered um most of all of you. I'm gonna get to you in just a minute, but um. I think we've, I've and tried to answer everybody's questions up up until this point. Uh, I know you guys have been. Throwing them on us, uh, you know, just to try to get some um some numbers. Um, to the tune that I gave you the history of all of these, the the pay here um that you guys got. Um, also, I was asked um. To provide some information, we. We were asked to reduce the our budgets by five percent across the board. And if we were to reduce our budgets by five percent across the board, even after you've met with everybody. Um, what would that look like? So what we did is Chris has uh prepared um. A sheet showing each department and a reduction of five percent less and what that number reflects. I'm still waiting for some departments inputs on this. I tried to get it as quickly as we could today, but um. You know, to finish this up today, but unfortunately, we weren't able to get everybody's. So I am missing a few departments, you'll see in here. Um. And again, this is, you know, this is. Very impactful to the to the budget. I mean, this is like if we had to really. Put down our, you know, everything. So I asked the departments to list out their items, their accounts. The amounts in which they would be reducing that line item for and the impact that that would have on the budget. So whether it was personnel, whether it was um. You know, uh. Trainings, if it was, you know, what impact it made. So you'll see that with the departments we have. Like I said, it's not a hundred percent. I think we got. One or two right before we walked into the meeting today, so they're not reflected here. Um, but I can certainly pass out this information to each one of you and you guys can at least have it for the next meeting.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So uh, we had a conversation about, you know, when I looked at the. The the budget that was proposed. You know, we're all familiar with the numbers. Seven hundred, six hundred thousand. Leaving the millage where it is. Um, we're going into the conversation. In in the red.
Oh, thank you.
Put it, to put it in that way. And so my thought was, well, okay, so. We we gotta, we gotta balance the budget, right? We have to uh try to come up with something that, and that's not considering. The wishlist that uh, you know, is substantial and uh. And and completing our negotiations for the. Contract with the police department. So it was, there's more an exercise to see. You know. If, if, if uh there was some additional um savings, cuts uh. Uh, because. We are in a tight spot as we discussed the first workshop, you know, all the costs have gone up. Insurance, electricity, everything's gone up. And and the budget was proposed to us was a. Almost a non-increase kind of budget and still. We're short, so that was my reason for asking that we look review. And I appreciate Tammy doing this because we got some, as you said, mayor, going into, you know, Wednesday's meeting is the one where, you know, the rubber hits the road and um. And things are, things are tight. And so I appreciate your your input and your recommendation. Look at this. Go back and look through the binder, go back and look, you know, with a fine tooth comb and. See where we are. We've gotta come up with uh. A number.
Yeah.
That works for.
And I can send you the revised as soon as we add, Chris is able to add in some of the other departments onto this um, the second sheet, but.
I don't think it'll change dramatically, just to clarify what the two sheets are. On the right of the first sheet, this is a page that's in the budget book already with the green header.
Yes.
It shows to the right what the new budget would be. It shows to the right what the new budget would be, saving approximately a million dollars, which is the five percent. And then the second sheet was the individual departments that gave us savings with details of what it would affect. And a lot of them affect services, and it only came to the tune of five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, so two departments there say they need additional, which they haven't specifically clarified how they would get the additional savings. And then other departments like Tammy said would have to still be added, so this is only coming up with about half of the information that you need to save the million dollars. Just to cut five percent straight off the top of the budget.
Chris and I.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I appreciate this, right, I think we all appreciate this because this gives us a sense of the kind of where the direction we need to be going in. Um, you know, add here, take there, but it's, 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 it's workable and I thank you for, thank you for, you know, doing this and I'm glad we had the, we had the conversation, so um, Madam Mayor, uh, you know, we'll cut up for us for Wednesday.
No, let's, um, well, we got forty-eight hours to let everything kind of digest and think, think, you know, um about possibilities, there's always a ways around this, I mean, this is still the best city in all of South Florida. And we've got a budget that we got to work with and that's what we got to do.
Yep.
Figure it out.
And one more thing, Mayor, council members, is there, if there's anything you know of tonight that you'd like for me to change before Wednesday, so I can be prepared to hand you all something, it would be greatly appreciated, I'm going to update the memo for some of the small items that we found during the process that might need to be changed here and there, but if there was anything you want on the off added from the wishlist specifically, CGA's number is a prime example of what's in color. You know, I know we're gonna, I guess, revisit the Centennial Committee, I wasn't clear on whether that one twenty-five was something that can be split over two fiscal years or if they wanted it all in fiscal twenty-four, anything. You know, if anybody has any ideas for tomorrow, it'll you know, everything is, no, but for me to do work on it tomorrow, we can work on it tomorrow, even all the way up to the meeting on Wednesday, because like I said, I just prepared this right until five-thirty, so you know, things take time, numbers have to change and, you know, want to give you guys as most accurate picture as I can.
Are there any organizations, I'm, so I'm thinking like the Historical Society, right, we have, we have uh funds budgeted, but they haven't come before us, uh, they're, they're going to be here on Wednesday.
They'll be here on Wednesday.
Okay.
They're confirmed. Hi, May Petrolanda. Something that um, I guess I should mention it um now, and it just kind of, I thought about it last meeting and um updating the council, but it might be just something to keep in mind because we have a lot of projects here. And a lot of them, there's cost involved, but when I was at the annual Florida League of Cities Conference um the week before last, one of the groups that I was talking to is a organization, it's really interesting, I didn't know, it's part of the Florida League of Cities, but it's a retired city managers' organization and they have about maybe twenty, fifteen or twenty retired city managers throughout the state that volunteer their time as, you know, kind of um uh volunteer their time within their expertise, so some of them are, um their expertise is economic development. Another one is, one of the ones that I spoke with, um, he says, you know, we can, in fact, I thought about this, um, if you want to do a strategic plan, he goes, I won't war, uh, I won't write it for you, but I will be there and they'll actually come, we pay for their expenses, just, you know, overnight lodging and, you know, whatever. But, you know, it's Florida, so a lot of them live nearby. And will, um, I'm going to get that information to Tammy so she can disperse this, but it might be something to look at, because when you look at this list, each of them have their areas of expertise. And perhaps when we're talking about some of these costs that are going to be, you know, additional costs that we, you know, we want to move forward, I mean, these are things we want to do.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we're all on board with that, we just got to figure out how to do it, and if you can't get there this way, sometimes you can kind of get there like this, you know? So um, just when you look that over, um, see if anything comes to mind, perhaps ways to, they were very, the ones that I spoke with these city managers, I mean, they were professional city managers, um, you know, and just they're retired and they're more than willing to to lend their expertise to municipalities in their areas of expertise, so just something to keep in mind.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Mayor, I think that's a great resource.
Yes.
Uh, for us, not just for this process.
Well, and I was going to mention it when we go back to the strategic plan, but actually, because one of them, you know, said they could, and I know, I think, Councilman, you had said, you know, we need someone to kind of direct this, but there were so many other areas of expertise there, so um, you know. All right, if there's nothing else, this meeting's adjourned, good night, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you.